Yep, you're excused. All right, well, as I think most of you heard, I'm teaching in sunglasses right now because I left my regular glasses in the car and Carolyn went off to the store with them. So, that's the reason.
I'm Carolyn.
Yeah, exactly. Throw my wife under the bus. We are looking at chapter eight in the book of the Revelation and we're, you know, I mentioned a couple of weeks ago when we got together that Revelation has a real annoying habit sometimes of shifting time and timeframes. And so last, two weeks ago, when we looked at chapter seven, I told you, I mentioned up front, chapter seven is an interlude. You have, you know, five and six work together, and six were opening the first seals, and we opened the first six of them. And then it's like, at the end of six, it stops, and we go up to heaven. And we have the big scene in heaven where the 144,000 are chosen, and where they're sealed, and where there's praise of the Lord. So it was an interlude, you know, kind of setting us up again on that. Now, we switch scenes again, because now we go back to the timeline we've been on. And in fact, if you were following a timeline chronologically, chapter eight would come really directly after chapter six. And you'll see why I say that here in just a second, because, you know, let's look at the first few verses of chapter eight, starting in verse one. It says, "When the Lamb opened the seventh seal, there was silence in heaven for about half an hour. Then I saw the seven angels who stood before God, and seven trumpets were given to them. And another angel came and stood at the altar with a golden censer. And he was given much incense to offer with the prayers of all the saints on the golden altar before the throne. And the smoke of the incense with the prayers of the saints rose before God from the hand of the angel. And then the angel took the censer, filled it with fire from the altar, and threw it on the earth. And there were peals of thunder, rumblings, flashings of lightning, and an earthquake." And we'll stop right there. You can see what I mean about chapter six and chapter eight, really kind of following right after one another. Because the end of chapter six was the opening of the sixth seal. Remember the big earthquake that we talked about, and how that came down? We had the interlude in the seventh, and now we're back. And so the Lamb is opening up the seventh seal in Revelation, chapter eight. And even here, it calls for just a moment, a bit of a disc, what do I want to say, rabbit trail. When we're looking at the eighth seal, or excuse me, the seven seals, the seven trumpets, the seven bowls, which contain all of the judgments that we see throughout the book of the Revelation, I mentioned to you, there's a pattern. You have the first four seals, trumpets, bowls, and they tend to be woes and judgments of going, what's going on on the earth and that. You have then two more, which tend to be more involved from a heavenly viewpoint, an angelic viewpoint. And then when you get to the seventh, that's the opening of the next group of judgments. So you got the six seals, the seven seals. We opened six of them. Now we're opening the seventh. Well, the seventh seal is opening up the entire rest of the judgment of God that's coming, because it's opening up the seven trumpets that are going to be sounded. That's why it says right here that, you know, "There was silence in heaven," but he saw the seven angels get the seven trumpets. We're going to look at six more, we'll look at six trumpets, the woes that they bring. And when we get to the seventh trumpet, it will blow, but what it is, is that's the opening for the next seven judgments, the seven veils or seven bowls of wrath that are coming. So, you know, you kind of, you always look for seven judgments, seven seals, seven trumpets. You get six judgments and the opening of the next bunch of them. That's what's kind of going on. And that's what we're seeing here, right now. And so, it tells us, "When the Lamb opened the seventh seal, there was silence in heaven for about a half an hour." Why do you think it specifically states there was silence up there? And it even gives us a time. What's, what do you think the silence is all about? And I'm open, you know, theories, conjectures, whatever. There's no right or wrong answer.
Well, my book says it's, my book says it's for awe and anticipation of the grim reality of the heavens, God is above to a reach.
There it says a fear.
It said prayer.
Mm-hmm. And you're right, that is pretty much what it is. I would say, though, that it's mentioned particularly right here in the book of the Revelation, because it is so unusual. Think about heaven for a minute. When you think about heaven, what do you think of usually? Even from the descriptions we've read in Revelation, what's usually going on?
Worship.
Worship, praise. You've got four, you've got, exactly, you've got the four, you know, angels around the throne singing, "Holy, holy, holy." You've got the 24 elders in front that are always praising the Lord, falling down. And then you've got the multitudes that are in front of the throne raising praise to God, praise to the Lamb. Heaven is a noisy place. Without being sacrilegious, it, you know, there's a lot of noise, if you will. It's beautiful. It's praise, it's worship, it's absolutely gorgeous. You know, you think of beautiful music in a concert hall and that. But all I'm saying is, there's normally a lot of noise going on in heaven. And all of a sudden, we've got something, when he cracks open the seventh seal, it is so overwhelming that the whole place goes quiet. The angels stop praising at the throne. You don't have the elders praising and worship. You don't have the multitudes praising. Those, that seventh seal, when it is opened up, is, you know, they're seeing what it means. They're seeing the full wrath and judgment of God coming onto display. Normally, like I said, when you're in heaven, you have praise of God. They're worshiping Him, they're lifting Him up, they're praising Him, they're glorifying Him. Now, for this half hour after the seventh seal is opened, what they're doing is they're seeing another part of God. Not just His holiness and everything else, they're seeing His wrath and His judgment. And it's such an overwhelming thing that it even brings silence in heaven for half an hour, as they're all just sort of standing there in awe at what they're seeing and what they're feeling. That's why the seventh, you know, why the silence is there, pretty much like Ken's note said, it was just because it's a recognition of this. I'm going to say one more thing, too. It's also a recognition that we're getting started on the last half of the tribulation. You know, I went through the timeline a couple of weeks ago, and I said that the six seals, when they're open, that's pretty much the first three and a half years of the great tribulation, all that's going on, everything that's happening. And when you come to the last, that big earthquake, right at the end with the sixth seal, that sort of marks three and a half years, the halfway point of the tribulation. And now, we're getting ready to see the real wrath of God brought down in all of its overwhelming terror, horror, judgment. So that's, that's the other thing. And you're going to see things change along the way, right now, as we go. You're going to see an even more overwhelming sense of judgment, but you're also going to start seeing the response of men, or the lack of response. So, anyway, this marks the halfway point. We're getting to the place that Joel talks about in Joel, chapter two, of the great day of the wrath of the Lord. In fact, if you've got your Bible, just turn back to Joel, chapter two. He's the second of the minor prophets in the order, if you're looking. But Joel, chapter two, and let me read verses 30 and 31 to you. Joel says, and he's, and this is the Lord speaking, "I will show wonders in the heavens and on the earth, blood and fire and columns of smoke. The sun shall be turned to darkness and the moon to blood before the great and awesome day of the Lord comes." That's another reason why you're seeing the silence, because they're seeing the great and awesome day of the Lord. And you'll start to see, as we go through the trumpets, how Joel, Joel, chapter two and verses 30 and 31 fit into things. So, let me get back, though, after my little bit of a discourse there, and we'll take, continue on. Look at verse two. You know, it says that John tells us, "Then I saw seventy, the seven angels who stand before God, and seven trumpets were given to them." You can get a good debate going among theologians and scholars about who the seven angels are. Most of us feel like the seven angels basically are not the seven spirits that we saw in chapter one of Revelation. This is a different group. This is not the angels that are around the throne. There's only four of them. We've got seven here. Best guess, these are the seven archangels that are in heaven. Gabriel, who announced the birth, would be probably one of the seven here, although we don't give, we're not given names. Michael is more than likely another one of them. Remember Michael from Daniel? He's the one who watches over Israel, God's chosen people. If you get into Hebrew literature, they'll give you names for all seven of them, not that they're important, but that's probably the group that we're talking about. This is a group of high, mighty archangels who are given the trumpets of judgment. And it tells us, then, that another angel came and stood at the altar with a golden censer. And he was given much incense to offer with the prayers of all the saints on the golden altar before the throne. And the smoke of the incense with the prayers of the saints rose before God from the hand of the angel. And again, what we're seeing here is worship of the Lord. But this is something that applies to each one of you personally, because when you pray to the Lord, your prayer goes up before the throne, and it's like incense. It's a sweet savory odor before the Lord, one that tells Him of your prayers, one that reminds Him of the beauty of the prayer, of your coming to Him and that. It's personal prayer that rises before the Lord. And in fact, we can go all the way back into the Old Testament, and we can see what's going on. Anybody know where the first place we see the altar of incense is? All the way back in the book of Exodus, when Moses is given the diagrams, the blueprints for the tabernacle. The altar of incense is right there. And if you remember, the tabernacle and then the temple itself, which comes along later, are built off of holy blueprints. So what you're searing, you're seeing, this is the altar of incense that sits in heaven, where the angel is, and where he is lighting the incense, which is the prayers of all of his people. In this case, it comes out, because if you think about it, if we're at the halfway point of the tribulation, there are Christians on the earth now, still, you know, even with the rapture having come, Christians are on the earth, and there are people that are being saved. We just spent a chapter in chapter seven, looking at the 144,000 that would be carrying the message of the gospel. So there are people on earth, and this is their prayers, they're rising before God. And you can imagine that if you're living in the times when those six seals are opened, you're going to be praying an awful lot, you know, seeing all of the death, destruction, pestilence, famine, everything that's going on. There's going to be a lot of prayer going up to the Lord God. And this is the prayer that we're talking about, right here. And we know that it's the prayers of the saints. You can turn back just a couple pages to Revelation, chapter five and verse 18, or excuse me, verse eight, where it says, let's see, "And when he had taken the scroll, the four living creatures and the 24 elders fell down before the Lamb, each holding a harp, and golden bowls of incense." And what are the golden bowls of incense? The prayers of the saints. So that's what you've got here. You have got the prayers of all the saints coming up. And remember, half hour silence in heaven, they're standing in awe of the judgment that's coming. God's going to be hearing the prayers of his people that, you know, to intervene, to do something. And he's also going to be hearing their prayer, though. They're going to be praying because of everything that's happening, because if you're a Christian on the earth during this time, you're going to be affected by the things that are happening. So yeah, you're going to be praying, "Lord, feed me, keep me safe from disease, help me, watch over me." But the other thing, what's the other prayer you're going to be hearing a lot from Christians? Make it stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, bring it to, exactly. And that's what kind of he's hearing. And so, he hears those, and he, he's taking them into account. It's not like they're being ignored. You can see how many, it says, "The smoke of the prayer, incense with the prayers of the saints rose from before the God, and there was much incense, much prayer that's being burned." But at the end of it, he takes the censer when it's empty, when the incense has been burned and it's all gone, and he says, "It takes it," and he fills it with fire from the altar, and threw it on the earth. And there were peals of thunder, rumblings, flashes of lightning, and an earthquake. And you're probably saying to yourself, well, how does that work with all these prayers coming up from him, saying, "Make it stop, watch over, help me?" You'll see in just a second here, I think. So we have another earthquake. Remember, earthquake, sixth seal, end of the first half of the tribulation? We've got another earthquake now, marking the second, beginning of the second half of the tribulation. And this is where we start, where the trumpets come in, because it tells us, the seven trumpets, now the seven angels who had the seven trumpets, prepared to blow them. And I'm going to stop again and kind of follow a little bit of a rabbit trail here. What are trumpets for? Why do you get trumpets out?
Announcing something? Announcing something?
Okay, announcing something, that's good. There are other reasons for trumpets, if you're a soldier. Warning, okay? They are warning. That's very good, that they are a warning. So what's happening now? God's heard the prayers, the judgments are beginning, the trumpet is start, trumpets are starting to blow. Turn back to Ezekiel, chapter 33, because trumpets, you know, if we're, if we're not careful, it's easy to focus on the judgments. It's easy to think, oh God, this is the Lord bringing His wrath down upon sinners, you know, punishing them and making them, you know, pay the penalty for sin, all the wrath that has been stored up. And there is a very strong element of that. But there's other things that we have to see in the trumpets, too. Ezekiel, chapter 33, and verses three and four. Let me read that. It says, let's see, of a watchman, "If he sees the sword coming upon the land, and blows the trumpet and warns the people, then if anyone who hears the sound of the trumpet does not take warning, and the sword comes and takes him away, his blood shall be upon his own head." The trumpet is announcing judgment, but it's not just announcing, it's warning of judgment. It is, these trumpets, when they're blown, they're telling the earth, judgment is coming. You are being warned that the Lord is bringing His wrath. Sin is finally going to catch up with everyone who has not dealt with it. And so he's warning them. God in His grace, even as you read the destruction that's coming, these trumpets, God in His grace is using them to warn people who are not saved of what is coming. He's, they're blowing so that people, like the watchman on the wall, if you hear it, you pick up your sword, or you run, or you get out of the way, you run to the Lord. He's warning you. But if you don't, like Ezekiel says, then your blood is on your head. It's not someone else's fault that the judgment falls upon you, that it hits you, and that it drops on your head.
So the trumpets can be heard not only in heaven, but on earth as well?
Yeah. The trumpets will be heard on earth, and they will, see, one of the things, when God brings judgment, He makes it very clear. One, this is judgment. Two, I'm bringing it. This is not something someone's going to be able to consciously mistake for an act of nature, like a hurricane or something like that. It's going to be very clear who is bringing this. Now, I want to also follow the trumpets a little bit more, because we do see God's grace here. God is giving people a chance, a last chance now to turn. God is very long suffering, very patient with us and with all who are fallen, who have not turned to Him, because He never brings a full judgment until everyone has had a chance, a good long chance, to repent. And also, so that, you know, when it does happen, like we said, that the wrath is on His end. You can see this picture, if you go all the way back to the book of, to the book of Genesis. Look at the story of Israel when it becomes a nation. What happens when Isaac and Joseph are there? Where does God send the people of Israel before He gives them the promised land? Leaves them there for 400 years. Egypt, exactly. God leaves them in Egypt. Have you ever asked yourself, why? Why does God not just sort of say, oh, you know, I've got a covenant here, I've told Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, that they're My chosen ones, that the land is coming to them, they're going to be a great nations, and that? How come they don't just sort of stay in the land and grow and become a great nation? Anybody know? Turn back, if you would, just real quick, to Genesis, chapter 15, and verse 16. Because when God is talking to Abraham, Genesis 15, and he's repeating the covenant with him, and he's telling him, telling him a little bit about what's going to happen. Genesis, chapter 15, and verse 16, if I can get my thumb to the right page. There we go. He's thought, God is talking to Abraham. He's saying, "As for yourself," well, let's see here. Well, come on, Craig. All right. I will bring, let's see, I'm going to go back just a little bit here. Verse 13, "The Lord said to Abram, 'Know for certain that they,' meaning his children, 'and they will be afflicted for 400 years; but I will bring judgment on the nation they serve, and afterward they shall come out with great possessions. As for yourself, you shall go to your fathers in peace; you shall be buried in good old age. And they shall come back here in the fourth generation, for the iniquity of the Amorites is not yet complete.'" God sends Israel, or for among other reasons, into Egypt for 400 years, because when He gives them the promised land, He will take it from the Amorites as His judgment upon them for their sin. And their sin is not complete when He's talking to Abraham. Indeed, there will be 400 years before they fill up the cup of their sin so high that God is ready and needs to bring the judgment. And in the meantime, if you think about it, if you go back a chapter, you will find the story of Abraham and Melchizedek, king of righteousness, king of peace, king of Salem, God's priest in there. There was a word about God, who God was, that was in the land. It wasn't Abraham, it was Melchizedek. He was a king. He was a priest of the Most High God. And he would have been known throughout, the king of Sodom knew him, because chapter 14 is where he goes and rescues Lot, and he gets the people back that had been raided by these various kings. And so, it's not like God is sitting there saying, okay, I'll give them 400 years, and, you know, and that's it. He gives them 400 years. Melchizedek is a presence in the land who is preaching, who is a priest of the Most High God, so they have a witness. So everything is given to them, every warning is given to them. And that's a picture of what's going on now in Revelation, chapter eight, with the trumpets. There is a witness on the earth. People are being saved. The 144,000 are warning. They are seeing the judgments. They're hearing the trumpets. They are knowing that God is bringing His wrath. He is doing everything he possibly can to get people to turn away from their sin and from the Antichrist. So, again, when you read these trumpets, don't just see them as, you know, God saying, you know, it's the starting gun for the judgment, you know, and I'm bringing the hammer down. See, see them as a warning, see them as a call to repent, see them as Him even in this, trying to bring people to know who He is and to bring in salvation. He is not willing, if He can at all, turn them, to leave them there. So, anyway, we get one more thing from the trumpets, and that is this. Who else hears them on the earth? The people of God, the Christians who are down there. And for them, I said there was an answer to all those prayers that were going up. This is the answer. This is God saying to them, I'm blowing the trumpet. The judgment is coming, but it also means that we're close to the end, that the end is in sight. Take heart, Christians. Take heart, believers. Take heart, those of you who are in the midst of this. If you have Me, you're sealed by My name. The time is coming very quickly, when it will all be over. It will all be over for eternity. I will bring a total end to it. You're hearing the trumpets, you're hearing the judgment, you're hearing the warning, you're hearing the people being told, and I'm telling you, take heart. I have not forgotten you, I am not overlooking you. You will not be left or lost, and that. So the trumpets are actually not just a warning, but they're an encouragement. They're an encouragement to His people that He has not forgotten them, and that He will bring His judgment. So, okay, we get to the actual trumpets, finally. "The first angel blew his trumpet, and there followed hail and fire mixed with blood. And these were thrown upon the earth. And a third, the earth was burned up, and a third of the trees were burned up, and all the grass was burned up." So, we've talked about the seals. These trumpets, they're doing a lot more physical damage right up front. As soon as he blows the trumpet, you know, you get the, you know, literally a third of the earth being burned. You know, that kind of says, yeah, that's a lot of judgment. You know, and that, you know, there was hail, fire, mixed with blood. They were thrown upon the earth, a third of the earth was burned up, a third of the trees, all the green. Can you imagine what it would be like, losing a third of the greenery in the world? What, you know, what that would mean, just how ugly, how bad it would be? Yeah. And that, just everything burnt to cinders, to ash, and that. And so, that's a pretty horrendous judgment. And then the second angel blew his trumpet, and something like a great mountain burning with fire was thrown into the sea. And a third of the sea became blood, and a third of the living creatures in the sea died, and a third of the ships were destroyed. So you're seeing, again, huge damage brought to the, brought onto the world. You're messing so deeply with climate, with, you know, the ability to grow food, with water. You're also, if you think about it, if a third of the creatures in the sea died, what would that be like, just in terms of?
Stench.
Huh?
Stench.
Exactly. The stench itself, and the rot, and that. And they would know, you know, that this is a judgment from God. And by the way, does that trumpet remind you, again, of anything? When it turns a third of the sea to blood? Go back to the plagues of Egypt, when Israel was being ready to be released. One of the first plagues was turning the Nile to blood with all... with all that is going on with that. And then the third angel blew his trumpet, and a great star fell from heaven blazing like a torch. It fell on a third of the rivers and the springs of water. The name of the star was Wormwood. A third of the waters became Wormwood. Many people died from the dot of water, because it had been made bitter. So, again, we've got the sea, the land, now the fresh water is being struck by an angel. The water becomes, or by the great star that falls, the water becomes like Wormwood. Wormwood, we don't know exactly what it is, but we know that it was a very bitter, bitter root that used to find in the Mideast. There's some question as to whether or not it was poisonous. You can go either way. But it seems to me, with a third of the water turned that and turned bitter, you know, and people drinking it, it's just gonna kill a lot of people. So, the land, the sea, the fresh water, we've covered the earth with the judgments that have come. And now, we get to the fourth one. Then, the fourth angel blew his trumpet, and a third of the sun was struck, and a third of the moon, and a third of the stars, so that a third of their light might be darkened, and a third of the day might be kept from shining, and likewise, a third of the night. And so, you put those four together. Land, grass and greenery being destroyed. Sea being turned to blood. A third of its animals or creatures dead. Stench out there. And, you know, the loss of the ability to move ships for a while. And then you've got the fresh water. Imagine if you're living right here with all of that, you know, you're wondering, "Where do I get food? Where do I get something to drink? What do I do?" And then, you're living in darkness, or close to darkness. It's not complete yet, but darkness. What would be the misery that's going on when this is all happening? If you can imagine what it's like? I mean, we sit here, and we get cranky in the middle of February when it's cloudy for four days in a row. Imagine if, you know, you've got all this other stuff going on, too. You can see, this is a judgment that is being brought on people. And if they know the judgment is from God, yeah.
Is there a significance in the third?
A significant, um...
Yeah, that's a good question, the one-third.
Mm-hmm. Oh, and the number of third? Yeah. If you remember, the, when they opened the seal, when they were cracking the seals, it tells us that when the four horsemen went out, they took life from a fourth, was it a fourth? I think, yeah, I think it was a fourth of the world. We said, "Two billion people were gonna die." Well, if you figure we're starting from the, now, we're down to 6 billion, and he's taking a third, that's another 2 billion people. So, basically, by the time we hit the end of the trumpets, we've taken the life of half of the earth with the seals and the trumpets. Now, if you're saying, "Is it specifically?" Yeah, you can say that, because three is the number of man. So, a third, and a third, and a third, you know, you're, you're getting man suffering under the judgment. And so that would be, that's as close as I can come to a real meaning for it being a third. You know, it may just be that God has a, has an accountant, and he keeps track, he says, "Let's do a third here, a third there." But, yeah, a third is kind of representative of man. It's the number of imperfection, if you will. Pardon?
Do you know how quickly these trumpets sounded, one after another? Or was there a gap between?
That's a good question, and it doesn't tell us. You know, the sense is that it's chronological.